Good morning and welcome everyone to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today's Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five. It is ten a.m. and all members of the Commissioners Court are present. This regular meeting is called to order. If everyone will please rise in intonation delivered by Commissioner Kirkendall followed by the Fledgling Leagues.
Dear heaven and father, we come before you today, Lord, we're thankful and grateful for life, Lord, for the gifts and talents you've given us. Lord, I thank you for everyone who's worked hard on this budget and on this tax rate, God. We recognize their abilities and, Lord, we thank you for their gift, Lord, to the citizens of Hardin County. Lord, we lift up our first responders, Lord, and our law enforcement throughout the county. Lord God, we ask you to protect those who protect us and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Fledgling Leagues?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number, excuse me, item number three is to consider and possibly approve the August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting minutes as presented by Mrs. Connie Beckton, County Clerk. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, consider approval of request by the Honorable Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, to cancel all registered claims from August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five and approval of today's cash statement as presented. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of two million, nine hundred, two thousand, five hundred, seven dollars and twenty-five cents. On our cash report and general checking account, we have six hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. And our First Financial Bank General Checking Special Line Market, twenty-four million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. In Tech School General, three hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred five dollars and six cents. For totaling cash funds of twenty-five million, one hundred seventy-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-four cents.
Motion to approve as presented. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McWilliams. Number five is authorization to pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Candace McKinney, County Auditor. Good morning, Mrs. McKinney.
Good morning. Pre-ord expenditures for August thirteenth through the fourteenth were one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars and seventy-six cents. Pre-ord expenditures for August nineteenth through the twenty-first were six hundred and eighty-six thousand, twenty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today, August twenty-sixth, are four hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. The total expenditures and transfers are one million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and three dollars and fifty cents. Gross payroll for August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five was six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Total transfer for the Ju- for the August twenty-first payroll was one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
Motion to approve. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. McKinney. Item number six, consider and possibly set the salaries, expenses, and other allowances of all elected county and precinct officers for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook. This was published in the CLBB on August the fourteenth. It is a three percent raise for all county employees and then there's some special increases that we did for the three fifty-sixth District Judge, the eighty-eighth District Judge and the eighty-eighth District Attorney to increase their county supplement per the new law that went into effect or goes into effect September first. And that's the first increase they've received since prior to two thousand fifteen. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, consider, excuse me, consider and possibly ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six Hardin County budget. I move to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget. The two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six Hardin County budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget by an amount of seven hundred ninety-six thousand, eighty-five dollars, which is a three point two one two percent increase from the previous year's budget. Property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is four hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars. Have a motion by Judge McDaniel, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. This requires a record vote. I'll start with Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
All are in favor and the motion passes. Item number eight, consider, discuss, and possibly adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six Hardin County budget. We had a public hearing at nine a.m. I'll just briefly review the discussion that we had during the public hearing. And that is the current fiscal year twenty-five budget is twenty-nine million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars in expenses. The proposed budget to be adopted today for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget expenditures is thirty million, seven hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. The proposed revenue for the fiscal year twenty-six budget is thirty million, seven hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars. That is a deficit in the amount of sixty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars, which will come from the fund balance and the interest and sinking fund. And as discussed during the public hearing, the reason we're doing that, the interest and sinking fund will pay off the certificate of obligation for the annex construction that was completed in two thousand eighteen. There's a fund balance in that account of sixty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars that we will pay towards that last note to ensure that we do not have or we have a very minimum fund balance in that fund at the end of this fiscal year or the next fiscal year. Is there any questions, discussion, or concerns regarding the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget? Move it up. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to adopt as presented, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. I did fail to mention there were some changes from the proposed budget to the budget that we'll adopt today. Mrs. McKinney went over those during the public hearing. Those have to do with contributing toward retirement on vehicle allowances for all six JPs, three of the constables, and myself. And then there's some changes, just realigning how salaries supervisor and certificate payer broken out for law enforcement personnel. Is there any other discussion or questions regarding that? Candace, is there anything you want to add regarding that?
Um, no, sir.
And Candace reminded me that we had budgeted a certain increase for health insurance. The actual health insurance increase was about point one percent less than what we budgeted and we're leaving the budget the same. Any other discussion regarding the budget? All right, have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Cooper, your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
All are in favor and the motion passes to adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six Hardin County budget as presented. Again, I want to thank Mrs. McKinney. She's done a lot of work on the budget in years past, but as the county auditor, she did most, I'd say ninety-nine percent of the work on the budget. At least, any of, anything that had to be done in the Hardin Department, I want to thank you again for all your work. Item number nine, consider and possibly approve an order to adopt a tax rate of zero point four nine six nine six five per one hundred dollar valuation for the two thousand twenty-five tax year. The debt service tax rate is zero point zero zero four two nine one zero per one hundred dollar valuation. And the maintenance and operations tax rate is zero point four nine two six seven four per one hundred dollar valuation. The proposed tax rate again is zero point four nine six nine six five per one hundred dollar valuation. The known new revenue tax rate is zero point four eight seven one eight three per one hundred dollar valuation. And the voter approval tax rate is zero point five three 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 eight three per one hundred dollar valuation.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall to adopt the order that's been presented and discussed here on the record. Any discussion regarding the motion? All right, once again, this requires a record vote. I'll start with Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
All are in favor of the motion and the motion passes unanimously. And I want to thank Steve Smith and Lisa Finn one more time for all the work that they did to make sure that we have the documentation we need to decide on the tax rate. It's quite a bit of work goes into that and he does it for all taxing entities, so we appreciate their work. Item number ten, discussion and possible action to adjust the TC BRS retirement match as requested by Mrs. Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director. We had a discussion item, I think it was two meetings ago from the...
Benefits Committee.
That's it, the Benefits Committee. And there was a recommendation made, there was some discussion during that meeting and I think what we decided is to ask Melinda to bring us two options and we would decide on one. And there's at least three people looking at retirement that are waiting on a decision. So I asked her to go ahead and bring it now instead of waiting till September, October timeframe when we normally make this decision. Mrs. Harrington? You can take it from there. Thank you.
The two proposed options that I brought for court are the, are the two hundred and ten percent match and the two hundred and twenty-five percent match. I guess the main thing to go over is what our required rate will be with each of those. If we did the two twenty-five, past and future, as well as the partial lump sum payment, our required rate would be fourteen point two one percent. We are currently contributing fifteen point three one percent, so it would still be below that. And then if we did the two hundred and ten percent match, past and future, along with the lump sum payment, our required rate would be eleven point eight six percent, which again, our elected rate currently is fifteen point three one percent. And that is going to remain the same no matter which match is chosen.
I'm going to adopt the two point two five. And you want to make it retroactive?
Yes, sir.
So as presented in the proposal here.
Yes, sir.
Have a motion was by Commissioner Kirkendall, who seconded it.
One of us.
Commissioner Young, got it? Any discussion?
Yes, sir. The fact that we were able to offer this and not affect the county budget is a huge win. It's a huge plus. Y'all know I've been on it, watching it since I've been on the court. I appreciate the work of the Benefits Committee, Ernie and his committee did an amazing job. Thank you, Melinda, and so I commend everybody who worked hard on it. And it just shows the fiscal responsibility of this court and our elected officials. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion?
One of the first things that we addressed when everybody was first elected on the court was this rate that we pay here. And I believe Commissioner Kirkendall was the one that came to my office and explained everything, could be about it. Like Melinda said, our rates will go, we're currently paying fifteen point three one and our rate will go, which we're paying above. Our rate will go to fourteen point two one. I would just like to note, and I think the rest of the court would agree with me, that there is a possibility that we might even go above that fifteen point three one. Is that a possibility?
Maybe next budget, so we can look at doing so. We'll see what our required wa- required rate is next year and if we need to go above that, we can look at doing so. That just pays off our unfunded liability sooner.
At a quicker rate, yes, sir.
Hey, yes, sir.
I would like to also mention one thing. This also puts us in line with a lot of the counties around us as well.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank y'all once again. Number eleven, consider and possibly approve the revised Title VI Non-Dominant Discrimination Plan as requested by Mrs. Melinda Harrington, HR Director. These revisions were recommended by the Texas Department of Transportation, who is driving the reason that we have to have this plan. So have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider approval of request by Mrs. Candace McKinney, County Auditor, to create the following revenue line item in the Special Revenue Fund Zero Eight Two, Article eighteen seizures previously established in Commissioners Court on June tenth, two thousand twenty-five. This will be creating a new line item, Zero Eight Two dash three six zero dash one hundred, and interest revenue at one hundred dollars.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, consider acceptance of the audited financial statements for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four for the Hardin County Emergencies Services District, number six. Mrs. McKinney, you've reviewed this?
Yes, sir.
I think there were some changes you asked them to make and they did it and everything's in order now. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen, consider and possibly, I'm sorry, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cooper to authorize the county judge to execute a new contract for on-site garbage removal by way of dumpsters with the public services at the Citizens Collection Station and presentation of current expenses and revenues since the rate increase that the court approved back in February of two thousand twenty-four. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Judge. Court, you can look in the packet. I had my secretary printed up our revenue and deficit at the collection station out there. I think the last time that we did this, the court made a recommendation and passed rate increases out there to see if it would bring our numbers anywhere close to each other. And you can see where we're at there. I think it's, and I'm looking at it, it's a three thousand something dollar difference. But even after a rate increase, we're still in the red out there. And personally, Commissioner Cook and I went over and observed some of the operations they had in Jasper County here a while back. My personal opinion is that we're never really going to make any money out there unless we actually go to the system of owning our own dumpsters and trucks and handling everything ourselves. But this is something that I just had my secretary put together for the court for informational purposes. The main item is our company that handles our dumpsters out there is doing a rate increase and they're going up on our rates. So we have to sign a new contract and I wanted to bring it to the court to see what the court's opinion was on whether to continue with this company at these rate increases. And I can tell you that these rates even wouldn't increase lower than the other competition, so.
That's the only question I would have had is if you checked, searched what the others are and if theirs is lower than... I, I would go with your recommendation.
I would move that we enter into a new contract with the company we currently have.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cooper to authorize the county judge to execute routine maintenance and inspection agreement with the Anderson Construction for the on-site septic system in Hawthorne Field, Hardin County Airport for one year in the amount of three hundred dollars to be paid out of the Crant County Airport expense line item Zero Two Two six six four four fifty, building maintenance and repairs.
Candace, is Angie here?
She is not here.
I think Angie, out of the auditor's offices, the one that recommended this. I know they put my name and everything on it because I oversee all the vouchers and everything. But this is something that is going to be renewable through Mr. Wilford out at the airport and I move that we accept this.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number sixteen, except for filing in the Minnesota Court, copy of Texas Department of Criminal Justice Community Justice Assistance Division Financial Management Manual in accordance with Local Government Code One four zero point zero zero four and the Texas Department of Criminal Justice Community Justice Assistance Division Initial Budget, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven by end as requested by Chief Adult Probation Officer Kevin Cummings, Adult Probation Department. Chief Cummings, anything you want to add regarding that?
I can get everybody a copy if they have trouble sleeping at night.
Yeah? Looks like there's no changes to it, is that correct? Have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seventeen, consider and possibly set the Texas Department of Motor Vehicle optional fees for calendar year two thousand twenty-six. Actually, this is what I was reading when I saw no changes, but anyway, I know that, Lord, you reached out to the tax assessor collector and he recommended that we not make any changes and just adopt what's in place currently, correct? So...
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eighteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Young to accept the settlement agreement, grant of easement and quitclaim deed on a certain portion of Bragg slash Ghost Road, also known as Ghost Road County Park, located in Saratoga, Texas from Three Tree Southern Growth LLC, care of manualized investment timberland and agriculture and... Commissioner Young?
Yes. This is actually to fix a situation that we had a couple of years ago where Three Tree purchased a portion of property in two thousand twenty-one. And part of this, part of Bragg Road is actually a county park. It was established as a county park in nineteen ninety-seven. Well, whenever they purchased this piece of property, they came in and logged it and they logged all the way up to the road. So they actually cut down trees that were in the county park. The county attorney and I have worked with them to replant all of those trees and come to a settlement. As part of that, there was a reversionary clause in that portion of the deed that if the right of way ever ceased to exist, that it would go back to the property owner. The whole road was given over to the county as a right of way from the Rover many, many years ago. And this reversionary clause was always in there, but it has never ceased to exist as a right of way. That was our argument whenever they cut down the trees. So they agreed to grant an easement and a quitclaim deed to clear up the situation to where it will be the county's right of way for forever. And the grant of easement is to, for them to be able to access their logging roads. However, the settlement agreement granted by Mr. McKim for the Historical Commission and he had some questions on it. So today I would like to accept the grant of easement and the quitclaim deed, but to table the settlement agreement until I get some of these answers answered.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? Well, thank you and Mr. Minnick for working hard to get all that together. And then you'll just let Lord know when to put the settlement agreement back on the...
Yes, sir.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nineteen, consider approval of request to amend the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget to properly account for the proceeds received from the sale of a John Deere tractor with boom mower and afford F seven fifty Dura-Patch truck for the R and B three department as follows. Increase revenue in line item Zero One Seven Three Six Four One Hundred, sale of capital assets, the amount of forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, and increase expenditures in line item Zero One Seven Six Two Three Three Five One, vehicle and equipment expense by the same amount.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty, consider adoption of Resolution Twenty Seven dash twenty-five, recognizing September as family mealtime, connecting families for better health as requested by Mrs. Katie Pace, AgriLife Extension Agent.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook to adopt the resolution. Katie, is there anything you want to add to that?
The only thing is that this is a new initiative with AgriLife. I'm obviously personally excited about it too. It does hit on our youth and their mental health and actually how they are connecting with your family if you are sitting around the meal table. And it'll be a social media campaign that will go out through our Facebook page. We're also going to share it with the CLBB. And it will be ideas for how to talk to your kids, conversation starters, what the health benefits are of eating at home besides just being able to control what you're eating. But I think it's a really fun initiative. I'm glad that they started it this year.
All right, thank you very much, Miss Page.
Thank y'all.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-one, consider and possibly approve the reappointment of Mrs. Gay Loke as trustee of Spitaltop Center for a two-year term effective September first, two thousand twenty-five. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? Want to thank Mrs. Loke for serving. I think she's served for about nine years now and I appreciate the time that she spends on that board. It's very, very important and we appreciate her. She does a great job. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-two, authorization for the county judge to execute the Exhibit K Secondary Manufacturers Combined Subdivision Participation and Release Form regarding the Purdue, Sackler, AlvoGen, all these pharmaceutical companies listed on the agenda. This was recommended by Mr. Minnick that we go ahead and sign this, but it does require the Commissioners Court approval. Have a motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-three, consider approval of request by Mrs. Regina Bolton, Health Inspections Manager, to approve amended ordinance number nineteen ninety-nine dash nineteen point three regarding the regulation of food establishments, including food service establishments, retail food stores, mobile food units, temporary food establishments, and roadside food vendors. Good morning, Mrs. Bolton.
Good morning, good morning. We've had a lot of changes happen with the new Senate Bill with the eighty ninth legislative session. And so I kind of want to go through this really quick with you. All of this goes into effect September first except for one area and we'll talk about that. Senate Bill One Zero Zero Eight is all about permitting. And it allows individuals to bring suit against local governments for violations of state laws in Chapters Four Thirty Seven, Four Thirty Seven A, or Four Thirty Eight of the Health and Safety Code. So now we can only issue retail food permits and inspect retail food, food permits that the state permits and inspects. This includes like the third party, which we already do with the CLBB ISB, the Lewis School, we, that we charge because of them being a third party for profit. We have to change our fee schedule, which is what I've done on some of this. And we have to go by risk base, which we've already done that in two thousand seventeen, so we're kind of ahead of the curve on that. We have to submit our fee schedule to DSHS. They don't have a way to do all this yet, so they're still working on all their procedures and how they're going to handle all of this. It's going to be a while, but right, we've got, we're getting all our stuff together. We must submit our fee schedule. We have to set up an email update system to our stakeholders, so they'll know at least sixty days prior if there are any changes in fees or protocols. And we already have an email database and then we're also going to put a letter on our website that indicates these changes and anything that may, may happen. So they'll have that sixty day notice. This authorizes reinspection fee not to exceed two hundred dollars, which we're already in compliance for. Limits permit fees to not more than the state charges, which we're already in compliance for. No double charging for several permits for one establishment already in compliance. Because a lot of some of the jurisdictions, we're permitting things like sound permits and delivery permits and we don't do that. We just do the basic. We also will still permit our temporary events and our multiple events as the permits are listed. Now, we have a new one, this general sanitation is now for daycares. Daycares no longer will receive a permit. They will receive inspections, but they will not receive permits because the state does not permit, but they do, they go inspect. So we want, we want, we have to add that on there as well. House Bill Twenty Eight Forty-four was about mobile food vendors and small scale food businesses. We will no longer permit or inspect small scale food businesses that have a revenue less than one point five billion annually if they have a manufacturing license from the state. Effective July the first, the state will take over all mobile food vendors permitting and inspections. So until July the first, we will be inspecting. We've had to lower our fee from three hundred dollars to two hundred fifty-eight to be in line with what the state charges. The state has asked that we continue to do them and not prorate them because they want our, they're going to grandfather what we have done into there so they don't have to do everybody right off the bat. And they're still working on a way to get through this. They're supposed to have their process in place and ready to go by the first of May. It's going to be a lot because it's a, it's, there's a lot of food, mobile food use and we know they're going to pop up like crazy afterwards. But we will no longer have any jurisdiction over them after, after July the first.
And is the state going to have people come into each county to conduct those inspections or how are they going to do that? Have they seen?
They have regional inspectors already across the state. Because people like, like Liberty County doesn't have health inspectors, Tyler County doesn't have health inspectors, different ones. So they already have regional inspectors out there. Do they have enough to handle what's going to happen? But they're working on hiring people and getting this stuff done. It, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be tough.
Guess what I'm wondering is how hard, if somebody wants to put in a mobile food truck or trailer in after July the first of next year, they're going to have to wait for the state to come in and give them permits?
It's going to be a process.
It's going to take them a little longer?
It's going to be a process. Again, they haven't put that out yet.
You'll roll that information out there?
As soon as we get it, we'll roll it out. And we'll put it on the website too, let people know how to get in touch with mobile food and stuff since we're not doing that at all. Now, that's even if they have a foodborne illness. The state's going to have to take care of that as well. So they will be the ones getting...
Any complaints on the food truck goes to the state.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Exactly.
But that's just food trucks.
That's just food trucks. That is just food trucks. Now, we will still be permitting, like when we go to festivals and events, the vendors that set up, like Rudy's and the ones that set up and just do the actual temporary events, we will still be inspecting those. So we will still be on hand for that.
They come under the temporary single event?
Yes, sir. And the Malties. Yes, sir.
So one question I have is the home group...
So one question I have is the homegrown homemade stuff, which could be.
Well, here's, let me talk about that. So Senate Bill five forty-one on expanded cottage food. Uh, no permits, we do not issue any permits to cottage food or nonprofit organizations. Uh, this establishes cottage food vendors which can sell cottage food at retail locations now. They can't, except for they can't do time and temperature controlled items, which would be like they can't do any, uh, any milk. They can't do meat products. They can't do any CBD or hemp products. So, but they can sell things now to Market Basket or H U B, wherever they want to sell. Will they do that? I don't know, but that's, that now is in law and they can do that. So they've expanded them. I think they took the cap. Is that, did they, did they take the cap off? Yeah. They took the cap off of what they can make now, what cottage food people can make. It used to be, um, fifty thousand dollars a year and they've taken it off, so they can make as much money as they want now. So it's a whole wide industry. It's, yeah. So that's, that's a, that's to be seen as we go. And again, we would only go in if somebody has a, has a foodborne illness and we would go in and that's the only time that we could go into that home and inspect. And if somebody gets sick, it's a blank. Other than that, there's no inspections on those people. So. Um, the other thing we have, we've added a late fee, which is after net thirty has elapsed, we will add fifty dollars. You know, if there's a late fee, if they don't pay their permia or their citation or whatever it might be, we can add fifty dollars to their, to their fee and increase that to kind of give them a little gig to pay their, to pay their bill. And then plan review fees, the only other thing that we've added on here is the cost for new construction or remodel that's over twenty percent of their remodel being done for inspector to go over the plans and approve the process. It does take a little time and energy and everyone charges part, we just never have. So it's something that's allowed, so I thought we'd go through it there. No, that was a lot. And, uh, so if you have any questions, have any questions.
Mr. Cooper.
Aye.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to approve as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item twenty-four, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cook to trade a two thousand nine Ford F-one fifty truck, VIN number ending in seven seven eight three to Sills before for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three Ford F-one fifty crew cab four by four truck, VIN number ending in zero nine five two. Total purchase price less the trade-in being thirty, thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Have approved amend the fiscal year twenty-five R and B four budget as follows. Increase expenditures in zero one seven six two four five seventy in the amount of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And decrease expenditures in line item zero one seven six two four three three four in the same amount.
Seven. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-five, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims, purchasing agent, to present results of bids received for overlaying approximately two hundred and thirty-seven feet by fourteen feet on Palm Lane and approximately two hundred and twenty-nine feet by thirteen feet on Robert Lane, both located in precinct four and possibly award to successful bidder. Good morning, Mrs. Sims.
Good morning. It's open on August seventh, twenty twenty-five at two P M. In the purchasing department, myself, Stacy Eckert and Pat Boyett were present. We only received one bid from C and M Construction for twelve dollars a square yard.
Does that, remember that's the same price they quoted on another small project in one of the other precincts?
I believe the crew. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to approve as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-six, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to present results of bids received for overlaying approximately two thousand five hundred and eighty-four feet by twenty feet on twelve shades located in precinct three and possibly award to the successful bidder. Mrs. Sims?
It's open on August seventh, twenty twenty-five at two P M. In the purchasing department. Again, myself, Pat Boyett and Stacy Eckert were present, so we received one bid. C and M Construction for four dollars and fifty cents a square yard.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-seven, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to authorize the county judge to execute amendment number two administrative services contract between Public Management Incorporated and Harden County regard, regarding C D B G dash M I T contract number two four dash zero six five dash zero six five dash E five nine six. This is part of the acquisition services on the, uh, project in the Lumberton area, El Pinto.
Seven.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item twenty-eight is discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including announcements which may be of interest to the public. Do any member, does any member of the court have any announcement items or discussion items that were not on the agenda? Anybody else present have any discussion items you'd like to turn forward? Yes, Candace does. Debbie's pointing at you. This has to do with the, uh, payroll next week?
Oh, I'm sorry. I totally forgot about that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Debbie.
Uh, yes. The, uh, payroll for this, this upcoming payroll beginnings, well, I guess the payday is September. I don't know. I don't have my information. Do I have to come here? September the fourth. Um, s- given that September first, Monday is a labor holiday, um, a holiday for the county. Uh, we are going to try something new, so we wanted to give the employees an update. Uh, we won't be sending a direct deposit file as early as, as we have in the past because of the holiday. Um, and the turnaround payroll, so employees who may see their pay normally on a Wednesday, uh, will not see that until Thursday and you may not see it Thursday morning, you may see it Thursday evening. But you should see it on Thursday. Uh, we just wanted to make the employees aware that they will not be receiving their pay early as they normally may would.
That's because y'all normally send the file on Tuesdays, but this time it'll go out on Wednesday, right?
Correct.
Is that right, Debbie?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments regarding that?
The only question I have is probably going to come up, do you know if it would be before two o'clock? I know it's on the bank end to receive it.
We'll upload the file as soon as we can on Wednesday. Uh, the bank recommended that we have it there about three and I think, uh, we should be able to. They told me it really depends, as long as they sweep by five o'clock on Wednesday, then it would just depend, depend on when each individual's bank sweeps it into their bank. So as long as I can have it there in time on Wednesday, then it just depends on the individual's bank as to when it's going to show up on their side. It will show up on Thursday. It just won't be as early as what people are used to and we just want to make sure. That's because of the holiday on Monday and always we end up working the whole holiday and that way gives us just a little bit more time.
Absolutely.
The bank does not charge a fee to do it the day before. And they will guarantee that it'll be there, just won't be there as early as what people are used to seeing.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you both. All right. Anything else from anyone else? All right. Mr. Levens, you ready?
I think so.
All right. Item number twenty-nine is a presentation by Mr. Jeff Levens with Levens Engineering and Design, also known as Lee, regarding the status of the six mitigation projects throughout Harden County associated with the C D B G MIT two thousand twenty-two grant funding. Give us just a few minutes to get the presentation up and then Mr. Levens will begin.
So where would you like me at?
Anywhere you want, everywhere you're comfortable.
And then kind of illustrate at the, at the screens?
Anywhere you're comfortable is fine with me. If you want to sit at one of those tables, you can. If you want to stand there.
Um.
Wherever you put that.
I think what, I could right just present there and then, um, grab the screens up, up front if that's fine.
Sure, that'd be fine.
Is it that table or the what?
No, I think I can stand over. I think he has everything he pulled up on the screen. Is Mary in?
I'm right here.
There she is.
I saw you in the hall talking for a while, so okay.
I want to commend you on how nice you look today.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirkendall. It's rare, but it does happen, right? And Mary, I wasn't going to put you on the spot, but kind of our first couple of slides do talk about how the overview of the program. So I don't know if that would be a good spot if you wanted to, to add anything in about the, the funding and, um, anything we might want to touch on.
Sure. I, I'll definitely be open to answer any questions anybody has.
Okay. Very good. Yeah. Thank you, Aaron. Well, good morning, Court. Good to see y'all again. Um, what we have is a, essentially a PowerPoint presentation that we're going to walk through. Um, again, some of this is regurgitation, but what this program is, uh, the funding has been allocated to the county. Um, the six chosen projects that the county selected, uh, right about two years ago and then, uh, kind of look at each overview of what the six are and then kind of get into project scope, kind of where we're at now and kind of what the, the path ahead of us looks like. So, uh, starting out slide one is really just a title sheet, Harden County C B G re- uh, Regional MIT mod program. And this is for flood and drainage improvements. So what is the mitigation funding? Well, the funding is provided by the, um, G L O, which is the General Land Office under the U S Department of Housing and Development's Community Development Block Grant Mitigation, which is, um, more commonly referred to the C D B G MIT. Uh, this funding is provided for disaster relief related to Hurricane Harvey to increase Harden County resilience to disasters and reduce or eliminate, uh, eliminate long-term risk of loss of life, injury and damage to property. And so the, um, the, the awarded allocation, the total allocation to the county was twenty-three million eight hundred ninety-four thousand and five hundred dollars. Um, there were also three other entities without, uh, throughout Southeast Texas that did receive allocations along with Harden County. Um, those were Drains District Seven, uh, Jefferson County Drain District Six, and then Orange County Drains District as well. And all these again were for specifically drainage improvements, um, throughout Southeast Texas. And so, uh, approximately, approximately two years ago, um, we had numerous meetings here at Commissioner's Court, which dove into numerous different projects across the county and where this money could be best used. Um, a lot of the local leaders, other cities, et cetera, were, uh, were brought in. Uh, and then we had numerous meetings with, with, um, with them as a group and individually, and these were the six that the county selected. Um, and so those were Gores Store Road channel and roadway improvements. The allocation for that, uh, project is three million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Second project was, um, uh, in Sillsby, which is what we call the Sillsby roadside ditch and channel improvements. The allocation was three million nine hundred and two thousand dollars. Uh, third was El Pinto. This is in Lumberton, El Pinto Fletcher Channel and Detention Improvements. That allocation was four million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Uh, also in Lumberton is, um, in the Southeast area, the Woodcrest subdivision roadside ditch improvements. That allocation was four million forty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, up in the Coons area, Coons roadside ditch and channel improvements. That allocation was three million three hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And then lastly, also Lumberton is the Adler Ditch Channel Improvements and that allocation is four million four hundred and seventy-four thousand. And I would point out that each one of those allocations is total project allocation, right? So that is excluding, that includes construction, grant administration, environmental and engineering. And so this is just a general overview map of where each of these six projects are within the county. I know some, some of those might be a little, uh, hard to see, but just relative, you can see the three there. Um, they're more or less in the southern part of Lumberton, uh, the Sillsby Project, the, uh, Coons Project. And then up in the north portion of the county is the Gores Store Road Project. And so project scopes, um, in these particular areas, this is just a general overview. For Gores Store Road, uh, there was a previous, um, Gores Store Road project and we're basically picking up where that previous project stopped and carrying that forward, uh, which includes right about ninety-three hundred linear feet of roadway, um, and channel improvements. This, this is actually bringing the roadway up some, um, so it can be used during heavy rainfall events and actually be passable. And also the related, related drainage improvements. For Coons, um, project scope is approximately seventy-six thousand, um, six hundred and twenty-five linear feet of roadside ditch improvements. Uh, approximately fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty linear feet of channel improvements. Uh, there in Lumberton, Woodcrest subdivision, uh, roadside ditch improvements is approximately ten thousand linear feet of roadside ditch improvements and approximately a thousand feet of, um, culvert replacement. Um, Adler Ditch, this is also in Lumberton. Um, this is approximately three thousand, uh, seven hundred and sixty linear feet of channel widening and ditch stabilization. Also in Lumberton, the El Pinto Fletcher Channel is approximately five thousand eighty linear feet of, uh, concrete line channels. Uh, that also includes an approximate six acre detention pond facility. And then lastly, uh, there in Sillsby, the roadside ditch and channel improvements includes approximately eighty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-two linear feet of roadside ditch improvements, approximately two thousand four hundred and seventy linear feet of concrete line channels and just under two thousand linear feet of storm sewer rehabilitation. Um, the next few slides is, uh, is, is really just giving a visual representation of not only, like in this picture on Gores Store Road. On the left is actual, uh, actual picture of Gores Store and some of the, um, the flooding that has happened, um, through the years. And then also there on the right is a picture, um, of what the improvements is anticipated to, to look like after, um, construction is completed. So, um, obviously you can see on, on the right elevation, um, elevated road, um, and also ditch improvements. There are several crossings, um, there on Gores Store Road as well. And so again, left picture shows some of the, um, current, um, flow obstructions, uh, with some of the existing crossings. And then we did have a picture of what, uh, as an example of some of the new improvements are going to look like there on Gores Store. This is a, um, a general map of the Gores Store area, um, as part of the application or the, the, um, the, the items that were sent to the G L O originally. Uh, we also had to show the beneficiary area, right, of, of who is actually going to be benefiting this local area, where these, um, improvements will be. So there, um, on the right, top right-hand side of that, um, kind of magenta dashed area, the magenta area is actually the, the, what we would call the beneficiary area. And that red line is the, um, Gores Store improvements. And so this, this project is stopping, I believe it's right there at the, uh, creek, uh, Beach Creek Bridge. Is that correct? So next, um, there in Lumberton is the Adler Ditch, Channel Widening and Bank Stabilization. Um, there again, left picture showing some of the, um, existing conditions that is there on the Adler Ditch. Right-hand side is showing an example of what, what improvements will be done. And so again, um, you can see the red line actually showing the Adler Ditch, uh, channel improvements. Um, and the areas just, what I would say, kind of north, northeast of that area show where the beneficiaries of this project would be. Next is up in the Coons area, Coons Drainage Improvements. Um, just as with the past previous slides, um, illustrating this with pictures always helps and so showing some of the existing roadside ditches. Um, and just through the years, which is really common throughout the area of, um, just overgrowth, uh, lack of maintenance, um, et cetera. And so improving these roadside ditches to really, um, have positive drainage, um, at the end of the project. So, uh, here on this, this map, we actually have a combination of red and, uh, green lines. And so the green lines are actually illustrating where the roadside ditch improvements are going to occur. Red lines are really your, what we would kind of call your, your main channel improvements. And so this project is more or less, I would kind of call in the northeast area of, um, of Coons. And so this is, you can see kind of faintly behind where four eighteen is. Kind of midway through that beneficiary area going back off to the east. And so this is, you can see kinda faintly behind where four eighteen is, um, kinda midway through that beneficiary area, going back off to the east. Lumberton area, El Pinto Fletcher Drainage Improvements. So again, concrete channel lining and stormwater detention. Um, again, I think the pictures somewhat speak for themselves, what existing conditions are, some examples of what, uh, post-construction will, um, will be like.
These nice pictures are on the, on the right from each of these? Did, uh, did Stephen do those?
He, he did.
I bet he did.
He actually did.
He used AI, I bet.
That's, that's right.
They look good.
That's right. So again, for reference, um, beneficiary area, um, red lines, channel improvements, blue line, um, approximate area, boundary area where the six acre detention pond would be located.
I might just add real quick, Commissioner Cook has been in talks with the property owner there, and we have a, uh, wouldn't call it an agreement, but we have an offer from them to, to buy that property, they're willing to sell it to us, so, uh, that's the, a big plus. And so now, Miriam, uh, now that we've, uh, approved that amendment a little earlier to do the acquisitions part of that project, Miriam will start working with them to make an offer, get it appraised, and all of that's in the process. Uh, Jeff and Miriam have done a lot of work to get ready for that already, the surveying, it has to be done, and all the legwork, and we'll start moving toward trying to get that property acquired.
That's exactly right. Yes, it's always great to start, start out with a willing landowner, uh, willing to, to, uh, to have those conversations, absolutely. So again, uh, Lumberton area, south, kinda what I would call the southeast area of Lumberton, Woodcrest subdivision area, roadside ditch culvert improvements. Um, again, uh, I know it's kinda repetitive, but left side, uh, some of the existing conditions of roadside ditches, um, again, examples of what post-construction will, will look like with ditch regrading, uh, culvert replacements, um, et cetera. Overview of the Woodcrest area, um, project, again, this is, uh, kinda just east of the, what we, uh, commonly call the Y there in Lumberton is where, uh, Woodcrest is, and so that, that whole neighborhood, um, you can see the green lines illustrating a lot of where the roadside ditches are. Sillsby. So Sillsby Drainage Improvements, uh, just to recap again, roadside ditch culvert, uh, culvert improvements with channel concrete linings, uh, some of the actual pictures there on the left, uh, again, and an example on the right of, uh, post-construction improvements. And this is a, a fairly large area, uh, many of these are, um, as you can see there in Sillsby, somewhat kinda south to, to mid-south, and that's not a proper term, but there in, again, west of, um, Business, uh, Business ninety-six or FM ninety-two is our eastern boundary of those beneficiaries. Um, you can see, uh, three twenty-seven, um, we're in the east and west, that is somewhat in the northern part of the beneficiary area, and all the green lines, roadside ditch improvements there in the, um, the lower half of the southern portion of the beneficiary, beneficiary area, the, uh, channel improvements, and then, um, getting into the Hendrix subdivision with some of the, um, the large stormwater pipe replacements.
Man, that's gonna be helpful.
Very much so, it's, it's been needed for a long time.
Does the, does the city have a project going on, and this kinda ties into that, if I remember right?
Um, actually not, the, um, the, the story to that was that the city was, uh, seeking, uh, many, funding for many different drainage projects, and there was a little bit of an overlap.
Okay.
Um, so the Hendrix area was, um, applied for through the Texas Water and Mountain Board, through their FMA program, um, to, to have these stormwater pipes replaced. And so, um, since this is actually gonna be taken care of through the county's project, um, the Water and Mountain Board is open to re-scoping that project and have improvements done other places in the city.
Okay.
Mayor, do you have a copy of this?
No, I don't.
I'm gonna get you a copy.
Okay.
You can see it pretty good on here, so.
And, and this is the map, Mayor, that, um, it was a good while back, probably eight, ten months ago, that we had brought to council. Um, and so, um, but I can get you a fresh copy of it.
Thank you, Dave.
And so the, I'm sure the number one question, right, when are things gonna happen? So this is, um, our slides, it, it really ends with project schedules. Um, and so we did put everything on one page, so starting out with Gore Store Road and Sillsby, um, we're anticipating, as of right now, and these are somewhat conservative, uh, but we anticipate really that construction starting in that November, December timeframe. Um, Gore Store Road and, um, and Sillsby now, we did bring before, uh, the court, um, several weeks ago, went and got approval for Gore Store, right, that, that bid package is complete, ready to go, we're still waiting on some of the environmental improvements to come in and have that authority use grant funds. Um, uh, and so as soon as we receive that, we can immediately start, start, um, advertising for, for bids on Gore Store. Sillsby is gonna be right behind that, we're actually working to rep up those plans now. Um, and Miriam, correct me, I think we actually have official approval on any of our projects yet, correct me if I'm wrong?
We have official approval on Sillsby.
On Sillsby?
We will have official approval on Coons September fifth, and then Gore Store, I, I think that we'll have it by the end of this month. So those will be the fastest, and then the last three will probably get approval in the next month and a half.
Gotcha. And so that's one of the things we've, we've been adjusting, um, our focus and internal, um, prioritization of, of exactly when these AUDF we're gonna rece- we receive, right? We didn't wanna be spending all of our, our time on projects that were still gonna be eighteen months out on getting, uh, environmental approval, right? The ones that were anticipated to be quickest, we were trying to ship those projects up in the list and, and try to have some rhyme and reason to how we were moving our focus. And so we've worked really close with Miriam and her team at public management, also with the county, and our monthly meetings. And so that's, that's why a lot of the, the projects in this list are the way they are. Um, just trying to, to match up those, right, we don't wanna get a, an approval and then still be twelve, eighteen months out on beginning advertising. Um, and so Coons, Woodcrest, El Pinto, those projects are really showing construction starting out in that March to April timeframe. It's very possible, um, that those will get moved up, especially if it's Coons, right, we're anticipating September fifth of having that approval. Again, another slight move on our schedule is move, moving some things around and then really get that up to the top of the list and have that ready to start bidding sooner. So this is something that, that we're continually monitoring and, and adjusting to the needs, needs being.
So if I'm looking at the chart correctly, uh, most of the construction on all of these projects will be going on simultaneously.
That's correct.
So do we have that many contractors, or will one contractor bid all of them, or, I mean, what are you anticipating on that?
You know, that, that's a great question, Commissioner Cooper, it's, um, so much of it depends on what their current workloads are. Um, I could easily see, you know, a couple of contractors in our area maybe picking up two or three projects potentially. Um, I would also think we might have some interest out, maybe in the Houston area, um, you know? Uh, when, when we advertise these on SIFCAST, you know, that, that broadcast reaches really, um, long and far, so, um, so much of it depends on what, what, how much these current contractors have on the plate, you know? That's, and that's really impossible for us to know, but we, we can definitely start making some phone calls, and many of them know about this. We, we've had conversations with a number of the contractors of the size and number of what's, what's coming down the, down the road for them.
Can you explain SIFCAST, just for the general public?
Sure. So many years ago, obviously before, um, computers became so prevalent, right, we would finish a set of plans, and we would literally have twenty full sets of twenty-four by thirty-six planers, contractors, you know, we would advertise in the paper. Contractors would come by our office and physically pick up hard contract books and plans to bring back and, um, and, and review, analyze, put their biz together, et cetera. Uh, SIFCAST has become a, a, a platform on the internet that many, if not all contractors, or, um, I believe it's free to join from the contractor's side to where, you know, contractors in, in Southeast Texas, over in Houston, um, it's, it's a way for us to upload our plans via PDF and contract documents, um, and it will notify them, hey, here's a new project, if you're in public works and drainage and road and et cetera, um, it'll alert them, a new project is available to look at. And so then they just go on and download the PDFs, and it's, it's immediate. Uh, and we can really keep track and see how many are downloading that. And so there's a lot of times, you know, on projects, you might see forty, fifty, sixty contractors or more that are at least downloading them. Now we, it doesn't really tell us how many are actually gonna bid the project, but, you know, it does give you some idea of how many, um, different companies are looking at it. And so it's, it's, it's really become kind of a cornerstone of how we, we bid projects, um, probably over the last ten, fifteen years, I would guess, somewhere around there, so.
What about the idea of, you got it broken down, uh, storm sewer and road repair as opposed to channel improvements, and we're gonna have both in Sillsby and Hendrix place, which we're gonna be, it's a lot different than Gore Store Road because of the area. Uh, are you gonna have the same contractors, or in the past, what, what do you anticipate, the same contractors will be doing both the storm repair and the channel, or will there be two separate contractors doing those?
The way we have this set up right now is, is each one of these six areas will be bid as standalone contracts.
Okay.
So just as you see six here, there will be six separate, um, uh, bid packages that, that a contractor will, will, um, you know, for some reason you have a contractor that maybe, if it does have a little bit of road work involved, but the, the majority of it is drainage, they would probably just soak out that small portion of it. So, um, that, that was really our final slide. Uh, Miriam, is there anything that you'd like to touch on?
Um, not particularly, uh, but if there are any questions, I can stick around and answer those as well.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate you being here. So Jeff got it all right, you don't have to.
I think so.
Nothing you need to say. Who's Dave? I'm not surprised.
That's a big leap, Mary.
Does anybody have any questions for Jeff? I'll start with, uh, Mayor Renault, you, you have any questions about the Sillsby area projects, or?
Big thing, I got a question about, part of that ditch that's already there that you guys are gonna fix, part of it's gonna be lining in concrete and part of it's not, is that right? How, where, do you have any idea of where the parameters of the concrete part are gonna be?
We can, we can sit down and actually, I can get you a map that really breaks that down and shows you more clearly. And there was some environmental reasons on the permitting that was kinda forcing our hand on that, um, that could, could've delayed it, you know, two years or more, um, we would've had to go down that road of permitting and some mitigation.
And the other question I got is, were you able to look about putting a ditch behind those houses in any place?
That's, that's, uh, on, it would be the west side of some of those homes. Um, I know the issue you're talking about, uh, but we, we can talk about that, um. See, that wasn't part of this original scope, yeah, I know that, 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 one of the landlords called me a while back, and we had talked about that issue. Uh, but no, we had planned on constructing new ditches on the west side of all those homes.
In your, in your scope of design and planning, could you make recommendations to the mayor about a future possibility?
Yes, I, and that's why I kinda wanted to talk to him, uh, there's, uh, yeah, there, there's some, some, some other issues, I think, between landowners that are happening there, um, but yeah, we, we can definitely talk about it, we.
That's been a, a major issue and.
Were they clear cut and, and brought a lot of.
And I would be more than willing to, uh, to assist if, if anything come up in the future where that's a possibility.
Okay.
But it, it is a major issue, and I know the mayor gets a lot of phone calls as, as well as I do on that, but.
Yeah, I bet so, I bet so, yeah, and that, I believe it's that, when you drive in, I think you're looking at one of the, the front doors of one of the, I guess, an old.
Once you get past the second intersection, uh, go past Wade, then whatever the next one is, yeah, you're looking at one of the doors, but it's that area right behind it.
That's exactly right, yeah, and she had called me, uh, and, and we had a long conversation about some of the stuff she'd been experiencing, some of the reasons why.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Drake, you have any questions or anything you wanna say about the Coons project?
Not at all, Tom, but I.
You happy with it? All right, that's great. Anybody else here from any of the other areas, or, uh, anybody at all have any questions or anything you wanna go back and look at on the slides? Misses? Stephen, he got it right?
He nailed it.
All right. Thank y'all. Stephen looks nice, too, he didn't get to hear that very close.
He, he does.
He stole my spotlight, that's okay.
He said you have the next one, though. I did hear him say he's buying you lunch on the way back to the office.
That's actually true.
Thank you very much, very good, uh, presentation, a lot of good information for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the very last item on the agenda, number three. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkland, I'll say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper to adjourn the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, Sidney and, uh, Gabby, thank y'all for joining as well, y'all have a good.